Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the 2022 Wieldamar City Council Candidate Forum. My name is Patrick Ellis, President and CEO of the Marietta-Wildomar Chamber of Commerce, and your host for this evening. I'd like to welcome the candidates and thank them for their participation this evening. So we asked the public for questions to be submitted to the chamber. Thank you to those who did submit questions. It's always encouraging to see those who are engaged in our community. So each candidate will be given two minutes for their opening statement. After the opening statements, we'll begin with the questions. Each candidate will have one minute to answer the question. At the conclusion of the questions, each candidate will have one minute for closing statement. The order will be in reverse of the opening statements, as I have shared with the candidates prior to this. I do want to share that leading up to the candidates forum, we were in communication with District One candidate Chuck Jones regarding the forum and his schedule. Mr. Jones works for Antrak and is currently on a train traveling across the country. And what we were able to do was record Mr. Jones answering the same exact questions that will be asked tonight, and we kept him to the same exact standards. The decision to do this was not an easy one, but after all considerations, it was deemed much more valuable to the public to have the positions of Mr. Jones available to them than not to have them available, providing everyone the opportunity to know exactly where each candidate stands on issues that are important to us in the city of Wieldomar. That video will be uploaded to the chamber YouTube and Facebook pages at the conclusion of this forum for everyone to view. So let's get to our forum. Earlier today, we drew names out of a hat for the order. The order for tonight will be Joseph Morbido going first, Carlos Marquez second, and then Matthew Baldwin third. We will begin with the opening statements, and so we will start with Joseph Morbido.
Good evening. Before I ran for city council in 2018, I've been a very active and visible part of the Wieldomar community since late 2013. I had started the Wieldomar Wrap blog and attended every city council and planning commission meeting, doing write-ups and sharing them with the community. In 2018, I saw the need to replace the existing council member from District Three. He was a nice man, but I planned on doing more. Once in office, I helped usher in a new era. Right away, I spearheaded a new sign ordinance which removed a lot of visual blight. I promised quarterly town hall meetings, and we have far exceeded that with monthly Coffee with the City and separate Coffee with the Mayor meetings. I promised a beefed-up approach to code enforcement, and we've gone from one code enforcement officer to a dedicated team of four. I supported Measure AA in 2018, which added an additional penny per dollar of sales tax. With that money, we've been able to address crime and homelessness in a more meaningful way. We went from several encampments in 2018 to no encampments today, and the number of homeless is estimated around 10, and down from 25 as before. That is due to the outstanding teamwork of our code enforcement, police, and swag. Other things that I'm proud of being part of is having passed an emergency zoning ordinance to keep a smoke shop from being 100 feet from Wieldomar Elementary, which later became Montague Brothers Coffee. Along with Councilwoman Bridget Moore, I helped establish Wieldomar Beautification Volunteers. We've removed many thousands of bags of litter from Wieldomar's roadways since 2020. I've gained experience from being active in the Wieldomar community for nearly a decade and have proven leadership abilities by getting important information from the city to the residents, even over staff objections at times.
Thank you. All right, next up, we'll have Carlos.
Thank you, Patrick. Hello, good evening, members of the community. Thank you for attending tonight's event. My name is Carlos Marquez, and I'm one of your candidates in this year's Wieldomar City Council election to represent District One. I'm a parent, husband, homeowner, and fellow neighbor. I've lived in the Inland Empire for 19 years and moved to Wieldomar four years ago, chasing the dream of owning a home and raising a family. Since becoming a parent in June, I've been inspired to become more involved in our community, because like any parent, I want to ensure that I'm raising my child in a safe place. With District One having an open seat, I recognize that there's a need to serve the community, and I'm committed to stepping up and engaging in that level of public service. I'm an active member of the community and regularly attend multiple city and community events monthly, as well as engage in weekly community cleanups as a member of the Wieldomar Beautification Volunteers. I work as a program development specialist for Thing Together, where I design STEM programs for K-12 youth. Throughout my career, I've gained a positive reputation for my responsiveness to stakeholders, my ability to collaborate both internally and externally, and for executing projects with efficiency. These skills will contribute to my success as a council member. I want to work to improve infrastructure, improve public safety, encourage responsible growth while protecting our rural character, and increase community pride through beautification efforts. My mission will be to serve the residents of Wieldomar by leading with integrity and building trust through transparency and accountability. My objective will be to amplify the voice of fellow residents by utilizing this seat to advocate for their needs and interests. Today, I am before you, asking for your vote as a fellow neighbor, because I care deeply because I care deeply about our community, and I have the experience to serve Wieldomar well. It would be my honor to serve you as your representative for District One on the Wieldomar City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, Matthew.
Thank you. I am not a politician. I'm a Christian who works in casino management. My wife is getting ready to apply to med school next year. She's very talented and supports me in whatever crazy ideas I have, such as running for city council. I currently have 130-plus employees and hundreds of customers daily, thousands weekly, that I interact with and oversee. I look at being a council member the same way as I look at being a council member the same way as I look at being an employee. I am an employee of District Three, not the boss of the district. I will be elected to bring information and insight to the residents and bring back their needs and wants to the city. I am not smarter or wiser than anyone in my district. As an elected employee of District Three, my job is to come to you and to hear your concerns and bring my ideas and solutions. Since I am not a politician, I don't think like one. I think like a businessman, with my main concern being what is the most efficient and cost-effective way to solve any problem. I am running because of the drugs, homelessness, and crime that are on the rise in our city. The numbers show the rise in crime. Property crime is up 24.2%, violent crime 8.6%, and rape up 33.3%. These numbers come straight from the 2021 Wieldomar Sheriff's Report, and everyone can see the homelessness and drug use when they drive around Wieldomar and surrounding cities. I do not believe our current city council is doing enough to fight this head-on. I work with the Salvation Army, Captain Butler, which has massive resources to help combat drugs and homelessness, and best of all, they do it for free, whereas swag costs money. I will work with local police, and if necessary, bring plans to increase police and fire budget to ensure the safety of our city, family, and friends. When our city is safe, the city can grow and our residents can thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So our first question tonight will go to Carlos first. So the question is, and you may have touched on this in your opening statement a little bit, but so maybe if so, expand on it. But the question is, is what is your vision for the city of Wieldomar?
So my vision for the city of Wieldomar is that it retains its hometown feel, that it's a safe community to raise our children in, and that it displays a strong sense of community pride, noticeable to the residents and visitors alike. You know, as your neighbor, I'll utilize this seat to amplify your voice and advocate for your needs and interests. The top three priorities that residents have expressed to me are to address the needed road improvements, to improve public safety, and the desire to increase community pride. Vote for me, and together, we'll make Wieldomar even better.
Thank you. Matthew.
And the vision for Wieldomar, correct?
Yes.
My vision for Wieldomar all stems from safety. If you have safety in a community and everyone feels safe, you feel safe with your kids going to the park, you feel safe with your kids walking home from school, everything about your city gets better. Investment comes into the city, businesses come into the city, they can open earlier and they can stay open later. It opens up the police to stop having to spend their resources on that. We only have five police officers for a total of 60 hours a day in Wieldomar. So that's all five of them working four hours of overtime a day. If we can shift from safety to a growing city, we could do much, much better. The safer our city is, the happier the residents are, and the happier the residents are, the more our city grows, the more we go out, the more we connect, and the more money we spend and just spend time with each other. Thanks.
Thank you. Joseph.
Can you please restate the question?
Sure. So what is your vision for the city of Wieldomar?
All right, my vision for the city of Wieldomar. We're a hometown, kind of a small city amongst the other cities in southwest Riverside County. And though the region is growing, and Wieldomar will grow too, we want to make sure we keep that feeling where there's going to be some development, but we're going to keep our rural charm too. As far as safety goes, there's a website, safewise.com, and they have us ranked at 21 out of the top 200 safest cities. And we're up several, I think, 20 points from the year before. So maybe there's something wrong with their computations, because Wieldomar is a safe city. There's always room to maintain our high level of excellence in that, and there's always going to be crime. I mean, it was mentioned in the Ten Commandments, thou shall not steal, so it's been an issue forever, but we are a safe city.
Great, thank you. All right, next, Matthew. You'll be first on this question.
Oh, great.
A council member needs support from a majority of the council to pass resolutions or ordinances. What experience do you have in consensus building, and can you give me a quick example of one?
Well, I work in a casino, so I have a lot of employees, 130, ranging from the first-time dealers to first-time waitresses, all the way up to managers of the casino. I have thousands of employees and I have two bosses. We deal with large amounts of money all the time. People are drunk, there's crime, there's all sorts of stuff that happens in a casino. So consensus building is I have to keep everybody on that same page and keep the casino running. If I don't, my boss will find somebody new who can. Whenever we have to implement a new rule, anything for poker, for blackjack, for any of the table games, I don't always know the most. For sure, I don't know the most. I have plenty of managers that know a lot more than me about the rules and the way a game should run. Building a consensus is I go to them. I don't tell them what the rule is. I go to them and ask, hey, guys, what should we do here, here, and here? They give me the best responses, and then we go and find the best answer out of those, instead of me just trying to jam something down somebody's throat, thinking I know everything. So I believe working in a casino, working with all sorts of type of people, thousands of people a week, and bringing everybody together so that still runs and it's a productive business and we still make money, I think that is building a consensus.
Thank you. Joseph.
All right, well, building a consensus starts with listening. You already know what you think. I already know what I think, but I need to listen and hear what you think, hear what the residents think, hear what my colleagues on the dais think, hear what staff thinks. And then from that, after the opinions are starting to gel, then there's time to use persuasion, if not persuasive argument. But in the end, it takes three to push something forward on the city council. And like I said, it begins with listening and seeing if maybe you can update your own opinions on something, like maybe you needed more information, and you're not just set in stone.
Thank you. And Carlos.
Yeah, so in my job, I regularly work to build consensus. It's important to be able to actively listen, collaborate, and work in good faith to meet the interests of all stakeholders. So as my example, my team is responsible for rolling out new programs and initiatives across our organization. And as such, I regularly get to collaborate across different levels of the organization to ensure that we're all calibrated and working cohesively. When concerns regarding our rollout plans are brought to our attention, we work with those stakeholders, with the stakeholders that are going to be impacted, to mediate those concerns and work collaboratively towards refining the rollout plan. And so in doing so, we actively find solutions that everyone either supports or can live with.
Great, thank you. All right, next up, Joseph will be first. So there are issues that the city faces regarding infrastructure in certain areas to propel development. What do you see as the role of the city and you as an elected city council member regarding these issues?
All right, let's take Wieldomar Trail, for example. That's being developed, and there's eight phases on the two different sides of the road. We're a small budget city, so we don't have a lot of money to demand things be done a certain way. A lot of times, development and infrastructure go hand-in-hand, and the developer is tasked with putting in the road or the sewer, the water hookups, whatnot. And in the case of Wieldomar Trail, half of it is going to be done, whereas the other half sits waiting for the second half of development. And that becomes a problem. I'd love to be able to, you know, wave a magic wand and get the entire road done, or similar things in other parts of the city, but we have to understand we're working in a very tight budget situation, and that's not really going to change in the foreseeable future.
Thank you. Carlos.
Yeah, Patrick, can you repeat the question for me, please?
Sure. There are issues that the city faces regarding infrastructure in certain areas to propel development. What do you see as to the role of the city and you as an elected city council member regarding these issues?
Yeah, so I believe that the role of the city council is to look out for the best interests of Wieldomar and to put us in a good position to fulfill the goals that we have. And so as a council member, the way that I would see supporting, improving the infrastructure would be to support, you know, tailoring either economic development strategies or working strategically with developers to get them to want to come to Wieldomar in the areas that are primed for development and help to kind of expedite that process, because, you know, as we know, the city is in a good financial place for the day-to-day operations, but we need to improve, you know, where we are for the long term. So those are some of the strategies that I think I would be supportive of.
Great, thank you. And Matthew.
Well, I'm going to be honest. I know enough to know what I don't know. I feel like certain questions like this are heavily favored to somebody who's already in the council, somebody who's already done the job. They can give you a pretty smooth answer. But I believe one of the biggest reasons I've started at the casino as a janitor and moved my way up to an assistant casino manager over 18 years is because I do know enough to know when I don't know. I know how to ask for help. I know how to learn new things, and I know how to not be prideful and try to give you a BS answer. I hate when I'm fed a bunch of lines, and I'm not going to do it to you guys. I don't have an opinion on this, but I will get an answer when I'm elected.
Great, thank you. All right, next, Carlos, you'll be first on this one. What in your opinion will be the greatest challenges the city will face over the next five years?
So the top three challenges that I believe the city will face all have to do with money. So I think those three are increasing the city reserve, improving public safety, and improving infrastructure. So we need, you know, we need to increase, or we need revenue generation to increase the city reserve, because the city, like I said in the previous question, it's in a good place for the day-to-day operations, but we need to be in a better position for the long term. We also need a fire station on the east side of the 15, and we need another traffic monitor officer to better serve the community. So, you know, we need the finances in order to support that. And, you know, the third challenge that I mentioned was improving infrastructure. So, you know, we need a lot of funding for these public bids on the capital improvement projects. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. And Joseph. Oh, hold on a sec. Should be Joseph. Are you there?
I'm there. Could you not hear me?
Go ahead. No, we got it now. All right, so you're on the clock now.
All right, okay, if I heard the question right. So our biggest concern is going to be uncertainty. We don't know. Are we in a recession? Are we going to hit a deep recession? Is it going to affect the funding that we have as it is? So depending on the revenue streams, if they stay where they're at, we're going to always want to maintain and improve public safety. After that, I add roads. Roads always are deteriorating, and they need constant intention, and they're very expensive. Something that some residents may not quite get is we're renters at City Hall, spending about $30,000 a month. And we need to get a city hall so that it becomes an asset for the whole city, for the residents, and for future generations. So those are probably the ones that I would tag.
Great, thank you. All right, next, Matthew, you go first here. How important is economic development to you, and how will you assist in making Wieldomar a vibrant community?
I apologize, I didn't get to answer the last question.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I... Oh, that's right, my apologies. Yes, I'm sorry, I started, yeah. Okay, so what is your opinion, what in your opinion will be the greatest challenges the city will face in the next five years?
I know I sound like I'm preaching the same thing over and over again, because it's the most important. It's safety and maintaining safety. It's getting more police officers, it's getting more fire. The biggest thing I hear from residents is two things. What are we going to do with all the transients? And the growing of small business, I'm sorry, three things, and the roads. The roads are a big thing. But you can't grow business until you're safe. No one wants to open a new business in a strip mall or another part of town where there's homeless people, where there's people hanging out in front of it, where they don't know if it's going to be vandalized or not, because nobody wants to go to that business. I don't want to take my wife to a business like the Stater Brothers over here in my district. There's often homeless people hanging out in front of it. I don't like my wife going there by herself, so I always have to tell her to carry a knife, or she's getting her concealed carry permit, so we can be safe. That, to me, is the biggest thing over the next five years, and the rest of that, your city can thrive.
Great, thank you. My apologies again.
No problem.
All right, so now we'll go Matthew with this next question. Sorry. All right, so how important is economic development to you, and how will you assist in making Wieldomar a vibrant community?
Economic development is very important. I'm a very big believer in small business and less regulation. As I've said it before, I work in a casino. We are regulated by the state, and everything we do, every move we make is challenged 15 different ways from the Department of Justice. You can't grow a city if you're always constraining new small business. My friend owns a small business of security guards. He has the hardest time doing anything because of all the restraints that the city and the state put on him. We should have looser regulations to promote people to bring their small businesses here, to open up here and treat them fairly and kind, and we will develop. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph.
So it's how important is economic development, and the second half of that question?
It's just how important is economic development to you, and how will you assist in making Wieldomar a vibrant community?
Yes, it's very important, and it was one of those things we could not afford in the early years of cityhood, but now we have Kimberly Davidson on board, and she's been doing an outstanding job getting the name of Wieldomar out there. I personally help out as far as attend like the commercial real estate meetup, which helps get together the type of people that that's their business, is to create situations where businesses can go in, and so that is there. It is a very important piece to the pie, because without funding, then there are no additional roads, there are no additional police, and no additional fire stations. So we need that, and I'm very happy with the direction that we're going at this time.
Thank you. And Carlos.
So I support responsible growth that is conducive to improving our quality of life while protecting that hometown feel that is Wieldomar. You know, so I'd be supportive of tailoring those economic development strategies to try to bring in the right types of businesses that will benefit the community and also, you know, increase that revenue generation to continue to support or to continue to improve our quality of life. However, I'd be hesitant on just seeing the or supporting the overdevelopment of our city.
Great, thank you. All right, Joseph, there we go, got it. All right, you're next. You're first on this one. What do you see as the biggest obstacles to bringing business with quality jobs to the city?
Okay, biggest obstacle. There's a lot of already approved areas that have been approved since 2015, and they just have sat languishing. So the obstacles, the way I see it, it's not a city thing. It's because we just came out of one of the greatest economic booms in our history, and still nothing got put here. I'm not sure what that is. I know that now that we do have an economic development director who's keen on getting our name out there and showing that Wieldomar is a business-friendly city, that's helping, because we have to get, our reputation needs to be better than the first several years of our city that every time somebody tried to do something, they were sued, and we didn't have the money to defend that. And so that put a cooling effect on everything for a long time, and I'm glad to say that we're out of that now.
Great, thank you. Carlos.
Patrick, can you just repeat that question for me?
Sure. So what do you see as the biggest obstacles to bringing business with quality jobs to the city?
So I would say that the biggest obstacle has to do with relationships. You know, however, I know that that is something that our economic development director is working on. You know, one of those strategies is through the commercial real estate, monthly meetups and communications to businesses that are out there. So I think the biggest thing that we need to overcome is just to make sure that we're building the right connections with people or with those that make those decisions, to get them to want to come. And then also think about what kinds of incentives we can provide to get them to come to Wieldomar.
Great, thank you. And Matthew.
A big obstacle I see is we're surrounded by cities that people would rather be in, Marietta and Temecula. So when people open a business, they look to those places where there's more population and there's more money. So I believe we need to incentivize businesses to come here, give them a tax break, give them something, take something off of their property tax. Whatever the city council can do, I don't know everything they can do, but we can incentivize people to bring them there and show them that we are a town worthy of their investment.
Great, thank you. All right, so this question, we will start with Carlos. Carlos, many cities in California have adopted public policies favoring mixed uses in their land use maps, incorporating buildings that offer retail on the ground floor, office space second floor, you know, and residential on the third floor. What is your position on mixed-use development in the city of Wieldomar?
My position would be to really look more into the data so that I can make a better informed decision or conduct, develop a more better informed opinion on the matter. You know, I know that we obviously need to increase the amount of I guess residences. There is a shortage, and there's a high demand. But I think I would be selective of where I would support those types of developments. And I think ultimately, I would want to know what the stance of the residents is on the matter.
Thank you. Matthew.
My position would be to bring it on, get creative, bring new businesses to our city. We live in a free market system to where if we put something in and people like it, people will move in, people will book businesses there. It will be popular. A free market system also means if it's not popular, it'll die off. I'm all for bringing in new ideas, being creative, and seeing what works and what sticks.
Thank you. And Joseph.
Do you mind telling me the question again?
Sure. Many cities in California have adopted public policies favoring mixed uses in their land use maps, incorporating buildings that offer retail on the ground floor, office space on the second floor, and residential on the third floor. What's your position on mixed-use development in the city of Wieldomar?
I remember first seeing this when I'd go to planning commissions, meetings, you know. I remember first seeing this when I'd go to planning commissions meetings, you know, six, seven years ago. And there was a planning commissioner that would like to suggest things like that. And she would talk about Little House on the Prairie, how on the bottom floor was the Olsen store and they lived above it and that's great. I'm I'm for free market too, I'm for if a development wants to come in and incorporate that, by all means. And that's their right to do that. What I'm not a fan of is when the state comes in and says you have to do that. Because that might work in, uh, Los Angeles or San Francisco, even Riverside perhaps, to have these multi-use right there. We're still pretty spread out and to force a developer into something like that, I don't favor that. And, uh, but again, like I said, the if that's what they'd like to do, well, let's see it.
Great, thank you. Alright. Matthew, you get first on this one. Alright, so we have a large and growing healthcare medical ecosystem here in our valley. Prop twenty-nine, which would require onsite licensed medical professionals at kidney dialysis centers. What are your thoughts on this issue and its impact to business?
My thoughts are the dialysis centers have been running fine and people have been using them for years with no problems. I am not a fan of whenever the government comes in and says you must do X, Y and Z. All it will do is raise the cost for the, uh, for the, uh, for the patients. Because now you have to have a doctor on site and having having to have a doctor on site obviously raise the cost. If they're doing fine now and they already have qualified people on site, why would we need to regulate that more? And, uh, and just force doctors there when all it is is going to cost more money. Those people are already having a hard enough time, why should we raise their insurance and charge them more money because they have to put a doctor on site?
Thank you. Joseph?
Yes, uh, it it seems like several election cycles in a row, the same thing keeps coming back. And it keeps getting rejected. It's too bad we don't have a three strikes, you're out for, uh, ballot propositions. But yeah, I don't favor that. It, again, it 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 is the government tinkering in places and stuff like that. Uh, I don't, uh, give them, uh, noble intentions. I, there's other intentions behind it. And so, yeah, I'm not in favor of that.
Great, thank you. And Carlos?
Yes, I believe that Prop twenty-nine would hurt local businesses and patients. And possibly even leave to lead to overcrowding in our emergency rooms. So I'm not in favor of voting yes on Prop twenty-nine.
Great, thank you. Alright, Joseph, you are first on this question. Wildomar has embarked on an update of the general plan for the city. Have you been engaged with the discussions and feedback opportunities? What is your thoughts regarding the general plan update?
Uh, my, uh, position has been mostly after we, uh, had a chance to appoint a, uh, a resident, uh, group that is part of it. It's, we've been encouraged to hang back mostly and we get our updates at city council meetings. There have been a few, uh, pop-up, uh, events like at the park, there was one at the corporate room where I did attend. But this is, uh, still a work in progress, there's a long way to go. And I'd love to be right in there, but at some point, just like I can't be on planning commission or the Measure C committee. This one is up to, uh, the staff along with the, um, the residents that are on that group. So I'm eager to hear more about it. I know that this has been a long time coming and I'm excited that we're finally getting a chance to do it.
Great, thank you. Carlos?
So my involve, my involvement with, uh, the general account plan update. As a resident, I participated in the survey, uh, for the envisioned Wildomar, uh, twenty forty. Um, I regularly visited the website, uh, just to build my capacity and understanding. Um, in what the that plan and vision is for the city. And and also, you know, hearing updates, uh, I think I was at the previous city council meeting. Um, I would love to continue to learn more, um, about it and, uh, I'm eager to see I guess the the, how much of that vision comes to fruition?
Great, thank you. And Matthew?
Well, of the other two candidates, don't know much about it, I don't have a shot to know much about it, I'm not going to feed you a lion. I will learn about it, but I have no opinion and I don't know.
Okay, thank you. Alright, next question, Carlos is first. Wildomar is experiencing growth that it has not been used to in the past at this time. What are your thoughts on its growth? Within the growth, do you see the need for a defined downtown area for Wildomar? And if so, where do you envision it?
Patrick, so that was like a three-part question, right?
Yes, it was, yes, it was. It's a lot, it's, but I'll go, I'll say it again. I know, and and I'll preference that is that, um, my staff may have said this maybe a little too much, but I really do want to know all of it. I will read it again, just to make sure, I'll read it for everyone. So Wildomar is experiencing growth that it's not seen, uh, you know, or been used to. What are your thoughts on its growth? And within this growth, do you see the need for a defined downtown area? And if so, where do you envision that?
Okay, so, uh, my my thoughts on the growth, um, as a resident of Wildomar. Um, you know, I I've, I'm enjoying that there are many more amenities, uh, locally that I don't have to drive to Lake Elsinore, Menifee, Marietta, Temecula, uh, to enjoy. Um, as far as the, uh, a downtown, I think that was the second part of the question. Um, you know, I think it's it's important to preserve the history of Wildomar. And I would be in favor of of having a historic downtown. Um, you know, I'd be, I'd be curious to see or to know what areas specifically, um, our residents, uh, you know, really wants to take care of and highlight. And, uh, I think that would determine or help inform where in the city I would support, uh, developing that downtown.
Thank you. Matthew?
Now, give me one more shot at it.
You got it. Wildomar is experiencing growth that it's not used to. What are your thoughts on this growth? Within this growth, do you see the need for a defined downtown area? And if so, where do you envision that?
The growth is great. Bringing new businesses, new people and everything to our city is fantastic. Having a downtown area would be nice. Working at the casino, I interact with a lot of people. So all the time I hear where they're either, people are either leaving to go to downtown Temecula or they're just coming from downtown Temecula and everyone talks about the restaurants and how much fun they have. It would be pretty awesome if they were saying, hey, we're going to downtown Wildomar. Or we're coming from downtown Wildomar where this, this and this is happening and there's bands and music, whatever. So downtown would be great, where? Don't know, don't have an opinion, wherever, wherever there's room for it, put it and make it nice.
Great, thank you. Joseph, you want me to read it one more time?
Just the first part.
So Wildomar is experiencing growth that it is not used to. What are your thoughts on this growth? Within the growth, do you see a need for a defined downtown area? And if so, where do you envision that?
Okay, I don't mean to be a contrarian here with the person who came up the question, but we've kind of been stagnating for a while. When I first moved in in oh-one, I think we, we were definitely under twenty thousand. And it didn't take long to hit thirty thousand, but it was several years ago that we hit thirty-five and we're just at thirty-seven. So we do have gross but growth, but I don't know that I would say it's, you know, overly remarkable. As far as downtown, again, um, I've been in towns that have them, Lake Elsinore has their downtown. San Clemente has a nice one, uh, Marietta and Temecula. Here, we would have to make one, there is no historic downtown. There's areas, but there's nothing there, we'd have to make it out of whole cloth. I'm not against that, but the city can't do that. We can partner with a developer that might have a grand idea, but that's not something that, you know, I, that we can do. Because that takes money, that's just not the role of the city, but I'd love to see something if somebody's interested in doing it.
Thank you. Alright. We've got everyone, right? Alright, Matthew. You're first. So there's an ample amount of time that is needed to be dedicated to being an elected city council member. Whether it's for events or doing your due diligence for meetings. Are you prepared to dedicate the time that it, are you, are you prepared to dedicate this time if you're elected? Also, how available will you make yourself to the public with their concerns and questions?
Uh, yes, I'm able to have the time. I work with a boss that's very supportive of what I'm doing. And my position allows me to make a schedule for myself, so I can work in whatever I need to work in. I, uh, my wife's planning on going to med school, so she's going to be going to school twenty-four seven in residency and stuff, so I'm built by myself, so I'm going to need something to do. Um, what was the last part of that question, I'm sorry?
Uh, how available will you make yourself to the public with their concerns or questions?
Fully available. I have a hundred and thirty employees now and I have thousands of customers that all have my phone number, access to my phone number. When I first met my wife, she was curious, why are these people calling you at three AM, six AM, midnight? Because I'm always available to them. If you have a problem, I am there to listen, whether it's a big problem to me or not, if you're calling me, it's a big problem to you. And I'm there to listen and help.
Great, thank you. Joseph?
Yeah, if you could just say it again so I can get the parameters.
So there's ample amount of time that's needed to be dedicated to being an elected city council member. Whether it's for events, you're doing your due diligence for meetings. Are you prepared, prepared to dedicate this time if you're elected? Also, how available will you make yourself to the public with their concerns or questions?
Okay, well, that, that's probably not a fair question because I've been on the job for four years and I have already done those things. I've attended every single city council meeting, including the one where my grandson was born at six in the morning. I came back in time to make it to the meeting. I've been to a meeting, uh, on days that were my anniversary. Of course, Wednesdays are easier because usually go out for out anniversary celebration on a weekend. But so I've already done that, I already have a history of, uh, interacting with residents. I have a very good reputation of giving right back to them with answers quickly. Um, so I've, I've done that and I would, um, there's no reason that I would do that differently. And as far as, um, it's like I am the boss of my business and sometimes my business suffers because I put a lot of time in with the city. Or maybe I should say my wife's the boss and she lets me do this. But either way, no, I've done this and I would just continue as I have.
Thank you. Now, uh, Carlos?
Yeah, so I would say, you know, I wouldn't be running, uh, for this position if I didn't believe that I could fulfill the time commitment. And I believe that it would be a disservice, uh, to to our residents of Wildomar. Um, you know, if I wasn't up to to meet that need. Um, so yeah, I I I recognize that there's a huge time commitment. Um, and and I'm prepared to to be fully engaged. You know, I I will, uh, remain active in the community and accessible by being present at community events. Uh, phone and email will be the quickest way to get ahold of me, uh, but I prefer to build relationships face to face. You know, so I invite you to connect with me, um, in person, but you know, if you prefer virtually or through email. Um, you know, that that's all, that's fine.
Great, thank you. Well, that is it for my questions. I want to thank you all for answering the questions, I appreciate that. Um, it's now time for your closing statements, so you'll each have one minute for your closing statements. And we will start off with Matthew.
Alright, thank you and thanks for having us. When I moved to Windsong Valley, I did not know who my councilman was. He never reached out to me until I was running against him, then he had a self-interest in meeting me. Politicians expect you to come to the events that they attend or for you to follow them on Facebook to get answers. What about the people who aren't able to go to the events and about the people who don't want to follow you on Facebook? Why are they ignored? Why do you only go door to door when it's time to earn votes during campaign season? When elected, I will come to you, I will seek you out and I will truly listen and vote with the majority. District three's current councilman brags of commitment, communication and transparency. But in twenty twenty, he voted against the will of the residents of District three in favor of legal weed shops. He brags about closing a tobacco shop but then votes against the majority of his district and voted for legalizing weed shops. That is not a true representative. You lose all trust when you vote against the people who voted for you. I will not do that, I will always vote with the majority. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph?
It's a great responsibility to take on the job of city council member. Serving others on this level is a tremendous honor and awesome responsibility. Working together is paramount if a council member wants to make positive effect in the community. I believe that I've demonstrated that ability over and over. As is evidenced by the other four members of the Wildomar City Council having all endorsed me, not something that is very common in other cities. Now, this isn't about the candidates, this is about the needs of the community and working together to keep our city a safe and nice place to live. The one question that every voter should be demanding a clear and detailed answer from my opponent is how is it to the advantage of the residents of Wildomar to elect a candidate that has never attended a single city council meeting? Planning commission meeting or other city event and never answers questions after telling people to ask him anything?
Thank you. And Carlos?
So I want to think, sorry, I'm not sure if I started early. Um, but I want to thank the chamber for hosting tonight's event and for creating this opportunity for us all to engage. If there's anything that I want you to take away from this forum, it's this. As your future council member, I'm committed to listening to all of you. I will assess both sides of every issue and draw my own conclusions. I have a proven ability to collaborate, develop solutions and analyze information objective objectively. I'm committed to amplifying your voice and advocating for your needs. And I will continue to be active and present and accessible in the community. I stand behind protecting the hometown feel of our community while we work to improve our quality of life through responsible growth. As we wrap up tonight, I want to leave you with this quote. Never doubt that a few thoughtful citizens can change the world. Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has. Your vote makes a difference and your opinion matters. I respectfully ask for your vote and look forward to serving you as your next council member for District One. Together, I know that will make Wildomar even better.
Thank you. Thank you again for all of you for your participation, we really do truly appreciate it. Um, thank you to everyone who tuned in tonight and those who would be viewing this over the next few weeks. Uh, I know I got my text today and I know my ballot is in the mail as of today. So, um, it's really important that people do their due diligence and know who the candidates are and where they stand on certain issues. I want to encourage everyone that views this to make sure you please get out and vote. It's the most important thing you can do to have a true impact on all of our lives. Please make sure you get educated regarding all the issues on our ballot this year. The Marietta-Wildomar Chamber of Commerce has taken positions on several ballot initiatives this year. Um, we're going to post a little slide here that shows you where we stand on certain issues. Um, and let you know that, you know, these are the things that affect business in our valley and make sure that you do your due diligence as well to research these different issues. So we'll close out this broadcast with those lists. I appreciate you all again, thank you for joining us tonight. Um, and everyone have a great night.